Other at five thirty-five P M. This discussion items is discussed for proposed hours of operation of alcohol sales. Uh, this was put on the agenda as an item last week due to the holiday. The agendas went out late, so everybody didn't really get noticed until I think Tuesday morning. So it it looked bad, so once the workshop also, so everybody had time to prepare and come. It's a lot larger trial this week than last week, so we're definitely got out. And this is just a discussion. I think we need to start it, let the council kind of discuss their thoughts and the comments on this. And I just asked the public, I know it's a sensitive issue to some people, a lot of money invested, business owners, workers. I just ask y'all to be respectful while people are talking. If something said you don't agree with, we're gonna give everybody, if you sign up, you have two or three minutes, come to the podium and give your opinion. And we're gonna listen to it, but we just ask the same respect for the council as they speak also, so. Should be in public hearing. Okay, if would, uh. Go ahead and start at large, if you like to discuss anything, Mr. No Block.
Okay, uh, so the purpose of this meeting was, um, several reasons. And going forward, we, you know, it's for for many years, I know in two thousand seventeen, discussion came up and and has been an issue, uh, for even past, um, councils and administrations. And it addresses where does the city want to be? And we are in the midst of developing a new comprehensive plan. And we're trying to define in this comprehensive plan, based on their surveys from many, uh, people who took part in the surveys, about, uh, where we want our downtown to look like and where it's going to be in future years. And, uh, and also another reason is that I do receive many complaints on a number of different reasons, whether it's noise, um, or other things that occur downtown. And so part of this meeting is to seek relief for some of the residents in Bay St. Louis who have to, uh, listen to loud music late, late at night. And, uh, what I mean by that is one, two o'clock in the morning. And where does the city stand on enforcing noise ordinances and that nature? What's gonna be the solution going forward? So we decided to have this discussion. We need to assist our police department and find out, uh, a solution that balances all the needs of the people, not just a few selected ones. And so that is the purpose of this discussion here, so the council can talk and, uh, come up with some type of solution going forward to meet most of everybody's needs. Not every, not everybody gets what they want, but every, some, most people get something out of this. So that's why we're here.
Thank you, Mr. No Block. Uh, Mr. Sherman, you have anything? Mr. Lewis?
Yes, uh, so first of all, thank everybody for coming tonight. Just wanna kinda echo what Councilman DeSalvo had mentioned in terms of, you know, when this was first brought upon, the meeting for discussion last week, that was what it first was, is discussion. You know, for those that that keep up with city politics and ordinances, it's a process. Um, ordinances, especially of this magnitude, are ones that there's ample opportunity in discovery phase and discussion amongst council, feedback from those individuals in the community. And so this was just step one to gather that feedback. And it's, it's not an easy topic to discuss, you know, it's, it's one in that, you know, as, as Councilman Knobak mentioned, we as elected officials get a lot of phone calls, we hear from our constituents and the citizens, and we hear the concerns. Um, we hear a lot of the good, we do hear oftentimes, it's, it's the bad. And so we would be remiss not to bring those items up, and again, try to discuss what can we do to balance and find a solution. You know, it's no secret, Bay St. Louis is booming, it's a great place, people are coming from afar. You know, they're getting out of cities that have high levels of crime, they're coming here for many reasons. Many of the reasons they're coming here are for the great businesses that are provided downtown. Um, there's a lot of other reasons as well. And so as we're in the midst of our comprehensive plan, a lot of that comes feedback from individuals, and we have an advisory committee. And we have a, a set of core values, and there's a lot of comments on what, what direction do we see Bay St. Louis going? Is it a direction that we see Bay St. Louis becoming, you know, kinda centered as, as that scene where it's a late night activity? Do we want it to continue in terms of the, the opportunities for families to, to move here and have opportunities for that, that set of family, family values? And so we're just in the midst of kind of that pivotal point of finding our identity of Bay St. Louis as we've seen this growth and this boom. How do we envision, and that's the, that's what our comprehensive plan is, is named, is, is Bay St. Louis twenty forty-five, is where do we envision Bay St. Louis going in the coming years? And so again, it's a topic that we would be remiss not to bring up in finding and striking a balance and seeing what is the most prudent approach in specific areas to continue that balance of providing that quality of life that everybody here deserves, um, while continuing to support the local businesses and establishments. And so again, it is the first step in many ensuing discussions, I, I'm, I'm assuming, that we will have. And getting that feedback from everyone in this room, getting the feedback for those that may not want to come to this room and, and speak, we're those voices as well. And so that's, that's why we're here tonight, but it's no, you know, it's not a opportunity to try to vote and get an ordinance passed, um, right here and now. It is promulgating that discussion and going forward.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Seal.
Good evening. I found out about this Friday night, when I got a text that had been put on agenda. Um, I had no idea what it's about, uh, until we got here. Perceived problem of what we having in City Bay St. Louis. Um, yes, in the past, we've had noise complaints, we have a noise ordinance. Um, but if you look at police calls, there are very few noise complaints that are registered. Uh, very few crimes, um, that are happening for a city of our size. Uh, we have data, um, to show, you know, I'm a data person, right? I do a lot of data mining, I got a whole computer full of facts and figures from the police reports, right? Uh, astounding, right? But also what makes us tick and move forward is revenue, right? Big three hitters, Bay St. Louis Casino, sales tax and property tax. As long as I can keep sales tax and property, uh, casino tax and sales tax up, then it keeps your property taxes lower. But I will not, will not sacrifice the citizens of Bay St. Louis to do that. And at this time, um, from police data, it doesn't seem like there's a huge problem, right? Um, somebody told me the other day, man, you must be getting a lot of calls. I'm like, believe it or not, you're the first person that called. I don't get a lot of calls and complaints, right? Um, why, I don't know why. Maybe if you call and ask me something, I got the facts and figures and tell you which we, what we doing, why we doing it. You might not like what I tell you, but I'm gonna tell you factually what we doing, where we going. Um, so I don't get a lot of complaints, cause I just don't, I put up with them, but I just, um, like to answer factually what we doing. Have a lot of facts and figures tonight. Um, there appears to be some perception there's a huge crime problem downtown. Um, but the facts and figures really don't show that, right? Yeah, we have noise problems, I agree with that, and we do have a noise ordinance. Um, and I think that's something we can, we have in place today to work on it. Um, I do think we do not want to become a twenty-four-seven barroom community, factually, I do not want that. Um, but I think, you know, a lot of the establishments, I got a spreadsheet on the, the opening, closing times, um, a couple of bars stay open till two A M. So I did data mining on how many calls were done after one A M. Right out of sixty-four, sixty-four hundred and forty-seven calls. Um, there were sixty-six total calls in three years after one A M. For malicious mischief, drunk, fighting, and disturbance, right? I mean, you got, police calls broken down into so many different categories, right? Um, so public, I was amazed that we only had fifteen public drunk citations in three years, right? I looked at that data, there were six of those before ten P M. Right, fights, there were seventy-seven in three years, they're arrested, twenty-five after one A M, but there was eighteen before ten P M. Right, so the data disturbances, two hundred and sixty-nine, thirty-six of those were after one A M. A hundred and forty-four were before ten P M. Right, so what is the data telling you? Right, is it, is it a huge problem? Point zero one pers- zero, one point zero three percent of the calls were for those four cat- categories out of sixty-four hundred and forty-seven. So perception and data reality is two different things. We think we got a problem, but the data says we don't. Somebody says we're not arresting enough people. I can only go on the data that I have, right? Maybe we need to have twice as many arrests, I don't know. But the data I say have in front of me today shows that, you know, we need to, we don't want to get out of hand. Uh, we wanna keep our pulse on the community, wanna understand what we're doing and where we're going. And I think this is a good start. Um, but as far as for banning or outlawing or diminishing what we're doing, um, downtown, I think we just need to make sure we keep it in check. Um, and continue to do what we're doing, uh, from what I see.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
So, you know, this, this kind of started with the conversation that, uh, a couple of the councilmen had with our police chief. And, and as Mr. Seal said, you know, is there an actual problem or is it more of a perceived problem, uh, with, with late night issues? Um, we definitely have a noise issue, we definitely have residents that are disturbed by some of the noise that happens beyond midnight, uh, on Friday, Saturday nights, sometimes Thursday nights. Um, I've had a few complaints from that. But I've also had a lot of cars, calls from bar owners, bar patrons, citizens who, who visit our restaurants and bars regularly and, you know, have stated that, that the issues that we are perceived to have aren't as commonplace as we may think. And, and I think Mr. Seal's data backs that up. And that data was collected directly from the, the police calls and, and the information that was provided to us once we set this workshop. Uh, as I think Mr. Knoblock initiate- initially said, you know, this is to start a conversation, to determine if we have an issue that we need to address as a city, or if we are doing fine and we can go forward the way we're going forward. Uh, you know, there's, there's gotta be a balance there to, uh, allow people to have a, a business and have a livelihood that provides a service that, that people obviously enjoy. And, uh, some people like to enjoy it later than others. But does that cause a problem that the city has to address for the rest of the taxpayers to have to pay for policing? And, you know, extra, uh, issues regarding fights or theft or anything of that nature? You know, the few calls that we've had recently have, have possibly grown a little bit more in, um, seriousness or possible seriousness, which are concerning, uh, with regard to someone, whether they lose a life by gun or lose a life getting stabbed with a knife or a broken bottle or anything like that. Um, you know, coming out of a bar fight and spilling out onto the street. Um, we've had people report to me that they walked, were down there at one-thirty in the morning, and there was a fight under the bridge and, and bottles were being thrown and glass was being shattered and people were being sprayed with that. You know, I, I'm not down there, I, I, I don't know, I'm not down there generally past eleven o'clock. Uh, but, but that's just me. I know there are other people that, that enjoy that, and in my younger days, I was down there. Um, pre-Katrina, I was down there, you know, when the good life was there and Fire Dog and different places, so. Uh, you know, this is not something that's foreign to me. I just wanna make sure that we find a balance between people's livelihoods and people's life. I, I don't want us to have a shooting or stabbing or some sort of problem that after the fact, everyone says, why didn't the city do something? Why didn't y'all address this? Why didn't we even just talk about it? So this is us talking about it. Uh, you know, there was never a resolution or motion of any kind to, to restrict this in any way. It, it was simply to start a conversation, which is what we're doing here tonight. So I'd love to hear from everybody we can, and if we don't get to hear from you tonight, if you wanna send emails to us, you know, or call me on the phone, my email and my phone number are both on the website. You're more than welcome to, to do that and, and give me your opinion that way, not everybody likes to, to speak in front of the crowd. And, and I've heard it from both sides this week, and, you know, both sides have very valid points. And, and, you know, again, I live in Old Town. I haven't had issues with people, you know, uh, fighting in front of my house or anything of that nature, because I'm not that close. But I have woken up with my, you know, all the doors to my vehicles open up every, in the morning and, and everything going rummage through. So, you know, that's happened to me twice. Uh, once, the only, the only real reason that I, that I got aggravated with that was because it rained, so my, my vehicles were wet. But, you know, uh, it's, it can be frustrating. Since the first time, I don't leave anything in my vehicles that anybody would take, so nothing was taken. But that's the only issues that I've come across recently, and the more, more extent than not, I believe that's probably kids or, or teenage kids, not necessarily bar patrons of any kind, so. But, uh, again, I'd like to hear from everybody that's here, and I thank y'all for all coming out.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Ms. Smith, I think we, you was gonna check, but I don't think you've heard anything back yet on. Not that the council's doing it, but if, it would be a big process, it wouldn't just be a motion to vote and we shut it down.
Correct, the O R would have to be involved.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you. Yeah, and I kinda echo what Mr. Seal said, what Mr. Hoffman said, I mean, we, I think the three major attractions we have are the beaches, the waterfront, and the bayous and the Jordan River and downtown, which brings people to Bay St. Louis, in my opinion, from everybody I talked to. So downtown is a big part of it, cause once you get out of there, there's not a lot to do, really. I mean, so that's where most of everything's concentrated at, is that area. So we don't want to do anything to disturb it. Also, I want people to feel safe when they come here, because they are coming from higher crime cities and other places, so. We just wanna be responsible business owners, responsible police officers. If, if someone needs to go to jail, take them to jail, that's the way I feel, because if you don't, it's like a child. If you're just threatened and don't never do anything, they just gonna keep giving you problems. So, you know, if somebody comes here, they just wanna start trouble, I don't want them in my city. I want the responsible person to come here, spend money, enjoy themselves, have a good time, go back home, tell their friends, bring their friends to, to buy a weekend house here, like happens all the time. So, but if we get a bad reputation, that can change also, and it would hurt the same people in the room that's complaining of, about what we talking about. So I think it affects everybody that we do keep it to where it's a safe community to come to, visit and enjoy. Um, so that's, that's my main comments on it. Um, we'll start with the public forum, um, like I say, three minutes, if you can kinda keep it short. Uh, respectful, state your point, and we'll move on. Mr. John Omen? Uh, he's got three on the time sheet, so, yeah, three minutes.
John Omen, one ten Demont Wilson Avenue. Uh, beginning in the first half of the last century, I grew up in New Orleans. Thanks to Louisiana's Napoleonic code and the city's laissez-faire attitude, there weren't a lot of liquor laws for a consumer to worry about local or tourists. Then I went to school in Baton Rouge. Pretty much sa- similar situation. I do recall, though, that alcohol sales were prohibited within a quarter mile of the LSU campus. But you could set your speedometer, starting at the Highland Road gates, it was four hundred and forty yards to the first two bars on either side of the road. Bangling the tiger. My education continued in Baltimore. There's a place, in a bar, just before two o'clock in the morning, the lights go on, jukeboxes unplugged, the tables are cleared, and the patrons are escorted or pushed out the door into the street. Especially downtown, the muggers loved it. It was just a target-rich environment furnished for them on a schedule. It was great. Then I spent a lot of time in New York. And alcohol sales had to stop at either four or three in the morning, depending on the day of the work week, excuse me. But if management chose, you could buy two or three rounds of drinks and line them up, just stay there, you know, the music continued. And the pool table, uh, kept going. It, uh, just lasted as long as the guy wanted. Few times, I've visited a classmate lived in Citewatt, Massachusetts, fishing village, some similarities to the Bay. On Sunday morning there, you could buy beer, but only in a cardboard container. Generally ended up as a Chinese restaurant takeout box with the little wire handle. That was great. Spent a lot of time after that in England. The old Victorian pub hours.
One minute, Mr. Sherman.
Three times a day, open and close. Uh, general consensus was that it led to drunkenness. The same time in West Berlin, you could, uh, only operate a bar eight consecutive hours, but they could be any hours in the day. Owners of popular places would just buy two or three places. I do wanna make points there, thank you, but, uh, the point is that liquor laws frequently have unforeseen consequences.
Yes.
That they range from silly to tragic. Uh, the other thing is many of the people here have Mississippi A B C to deal with. And that's all any business owner needs, he doesn't need anything beyond that. And finally, I don't believe the city of Bay St. Louis, especially its police department, needs any more restrictions to enforce. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Ms. Barbara Petway? If you would, just pull the mic down a little bit, she can speak into it, thank you, ma'am.
First of all, thank you for breaking down the arrest and so forth, I've heard a lot of people speaking out saying that there's a lot of them, and, and there's just not. We hire off, real police that are off duty in uniform at our bar, so we don't have to call them hardly ever. But, um, we had, our figures broke down of the percentage of business that we do from eleven to two. And it's like fifty-six percent and up on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. Um, we could stay open twenty-four seven, we chose not to out of respect to other people down there. You know, we do last call at one-thirty, um, have everybody out by two. And I like it like that, because the tru- there is some trouble after two, or you just get people that are lingering, they're not spending money. So, but I think any earlier than that, it's just not, it's not fair to target just that specific area. It's, it's not fair at all. So hopefully, everybody will get on the same page and keep it going. Okay?
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, would you mind, can I ask you a question? So, someone suggested to me, and, and he's not here tonight, but he, he suggested to me that maybe there were people that would stay outside of the bars, say from ten to about two in the morning, hanging out parking lot, whatever, back of their car, back of their truck, and basically drinking out of their ice chests, off the golf cart, whatever. Not in the bars, but basically across the street or, or right there, listening to the music, kind of taking advantage of the bars, but, but not being in there. Do y'all see that as a problem, because?
I don't see it at my bar, I don't have outside music, uh, my music is a jukebox inside.
Right.
Um, and one of our cops on duty is always outside and one is inside. And we don't allow that, because it, it costs the bar money when they're outside drinking in the parking lot, um.
Well, exactly, and that, that's my, that's my question is, is, because that's one of the perceived problems, but I haven't found, from what I've discussed with, with the, the police and, and others, that that is an actual problem, that people are hanging out and doing that, where they're not spending the money at the bar, they're actually just sitting out there, taking advantage of free music and drinking out of their ice chest. And then those being the people that are actually starting fights in the streets and doing, causing some problems, that the bars are getting tagged with.
And playing loud music out of their cars, I, I have heard that down the street, not in my parking lot, though, because.
But you ha- you have seen it somewhat, but just here and there down the street.
Here and there.
Not, not like a constant problem that every time or anything.
We're kinda back in a cubby hole where our bar is located, so I don't see everything that goes on down there, we're not on the beachfront.
Which one is that?
Caraccos.
Caraccos.
And I invite any of y'all to come down anytime you'd like to. We have pool tables, shuffleboard, dartboards, go- um, bowling, it's a little more of a local hangout, all the soc- um, service industry people come there when they get off. So, yeah.
And, and Ms. Petway, one quick question, I know if the, the mindset around having the music contained inside, I'm, I'm assuming because it's close proximity to the hotel, um, so that it doesn't disrupt some of the guests, I mean, did that come into play when that decision? Cause I know it used to always, the old Gabby's always had that jukebox, I didn't know.
Yeah, we don't, um, we, a lot of the hotel guests are in there, but you can't hear our music outside.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that, that it was.
We have, uh, one, um, outside, outside speaker on the patio, but they turn it off at ten. Cause I do know people do live there, um, they're, you know, I'm not trying to let somebody out.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, okay. And she brought up one thing I will mention is, when it was Gabby's, that they didn't have security. But then when they got and changed to the new building, they started getting security. Mister Lot up to security at Buies, you know, so the ones that do stay open late all provide, Dan Bee's has good security, so, I mean, a lot of these places really do have security, because like I say, it's gonna cost them money if something breaks out and everybody leaves, so they don't want it as much as we don't, so. Ms. Kathleen Monty?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Monty, one oh five Sycamore Street. And for the last four or five years, whenever I've come before P and Z or city council, and we've had different issues, whether it was noise or, um, whatever, I would ask this question, or several questions, and I, I would never really get a definitive answer. And I think it's kind of crucial to know the answer to this before we move forward. And, um, and it has to do with what are the legal hours that are recognized by the Department of Revenue, uh, slash State Tax Commission slash A B C Division? Um, you know, and part of this goes back to, has the city of Bay St. Louis ever submitted an application to these agen- this agency to qualify as a qualified resort area? If so, when was it submitted? When was the city's resolution passed and included in its minute record? What are the boundaries as shown on the application? What are the city of Bay St. Louis's legal hours as recognized today by the State of Mississippi's Department of Revenue slash A B C Division? Every time I've asked these questions over the last four or five years, I get different answers. And I would just personally like to know what it is. It's twenty-four seven, okay?
Yep, that's the recognized.
And that's because we are a qualified resort area?
That is my understanding, but I, I have not been able, this goes back so far, and we're still trying to look to find, I mean, this goes back years ago. So there are statutes that you can go look in that are, that are more recent, and you're not gonna find the Bay St. Louis listed in those.
Uh, well, I know, cause I've been.
And I think Ms. Smith and, and Ms. Monty, um, that we did get a map, uh, provided yesterday from the Department of Revenue, it was entirety of the Bay St. Louis, but I think it went through the county rather than the city. I'm sure there had been some point that the city had adopted what the county, but from what Department of Revenue and A B C said, it was adopted through the county first, and then, I guess, the city resolution, but again, that.
But so far, we have not found anything as a city resolution, like, that, correct?
I'd be willing to bet when it backed on the casino.
Uh, yeah, I've never heard this question in twenty-three years.
Yeah.
Honestly, I've never, I, I've never knew we had state law that says hours they regulate us. I've always heard that municipalities have home rule, means they can set their rules and set their guidelines per some statutes, but I've never heard that the cities are given a edict of when you can and cannot operate, regardless of whether we resort.
State Mississippi says ten A M. to midnight.
Yeah, and again, I, I.
Unless you are a resort area.
And I'm ignorant to that, cause I've never, ever heard that for twenty-three years.
Well, I think those are important questions to answer.
And we'll dig into it.
Yeah, it's, it's on my list now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monty. Looked like windy, but then it might have been scratched out, this area windy. Okay, early Cobb?
Name's Early Cobb, I live on Washington Street. Um, Mr. Seal, thirty-six one. Mr. Seal's already answered one question I had, which is, is there any statistical crime data that shows any reason for even consideration of an ordinance? Second question is, is, has there been any noise level studies? And I don't mean anyone's perception of noise, I mean, actual studies by scientific companies that come in, measure decibels, stuff like that, done during that time.
Nothing, no, uh, just.
Well, they have, they have a decibel. They have a decibel ordinance, but I spoke to the city judge, and there's never been a conviction on a noise ticket based on decibels, because it's just unenforceable, actually. So they do have that on the books, but I've.
Well, I was asking for more of a study conducted of the areas showing noise decibels at. Well, I was asking for more of a study conducted of the areas showing noise decibels at certain areas during certain time.
Well, I mean, most of the noise comes, you know.
I know where the noise come from. I'm just asking if there's been an actual scientific study.
No, sir. Not that I know of.
So, we know crime doesn't have any real effect after two AM. We don't have any noise level studies to warrant such an ordinance. Can't list traffic and parking, cause that's a problem all day, every day. So, my thing is, where's this coming from? If there's no data to show that there's even a real problem?
Well, just because Mister Seal's signing the actual calls, doesn't mean that people don't complain about it.
Well, yeah, but there's got to be a real problem. There's gotta be a study to show that there's a real problem.
Well, there's no study. You know, so I've had many calls in the last few days where people don't wanna say anything because they don't, they fear that they'll be screamed at, basically, and they already don't wanna, you know, they don't wanna give their addresses or whatever, or make a police call. And, um, that's the relief I was talking about, so.
So who's, where's this coming from?
It comes from, uh, all over the city behind, behind.
I'm saying, who's pushing this move for?
I put it on the agenda.
So we don't have any actual data to show anything, any need for an order?
Well, I mean, I've talked to many police officers, and, uh, you know, they were asking for some help.
Where are they at? Why aren't they here? Let me, Doug, Mister Seal can tell you something. I'm retired military. And in the military, we learned something early on, and then as leaders, we push it down throughout the rank. And that is, don't believe anything you hear and only half of what you see. If I'm not seeing even any evidence of a requirement to even consider such an ordinance, where's it at? Show me the data. Show me the evidence. I wanna see it. Because here's the thing, I, I've lived all over the world. I've been in many different states, many different cities, both in Europe and here. I could have retired anywhere. I could have stayed in Texas, which I'd have twice the amount of benefit. I chose to make this my home, cause I never had a home after I joined the military, cause you move around too much. So home for people that spend a lifetime in the military is a big deal. You pick it wisely. And I did that, and I picked this place, but I love this little town. Anybody over the age of forty, I always tell them, if they don't know about our town, I tell them, picture a coastal version of Northern Expose. Quirky little town, quirky people, some of them a little weird, but it's okay. And we all get along and it's great, and everybody lets everybody else just live their life, and I love that.
Thank you, Mister Early.
And I love this town. So if you start getting in that situation where you're regulating a mass group of people or a few, once you put that car on those tracks which go downhill, it's really hard to stop it once it starts. And again, and it becomes a very slippery slope. And where do you end? And I can tell you where it ends, cause I've been around enough, the world enough to tell you, it doesn't turn out well. And you end up losing the spirit and the character of the town, just like New Orleans is lost. I grew up in New Orleans. There's nothing about New Orleans about New Orleans anymore.
Time's up, Mister Early. I'm sorry, but thank you for your service also.
I ain't never seen you dress like that, boy.
Mister Lewis like to have a comment.
Yeah, uh, Mister Mayor, is there, so a lot of the discussion with some of the law, local law enforcement, I believe there was a meeting a few weeks back going over the data, um, further validates, we had a discussion during budget in the last meeting that there was gonna be three additional officers really designated to the night shift. And so I think it was commented that's gonna be kind of a downtown task force. So, I guess my question, are you gonna be, as, over the law enforcement, will you be kinda echoing what some of those conversations was with, with our chief and what, you know, and, and predicating of why we felt the need to add those officers? You know, cause there's night shifts that they get pulled to one area that it's wide open in parts of the city. And we owe it to the citizens to make sure we have coverage throughout the city, not just one area. So, I mean, I think there was some concern, as Councilman Navak pointed to, but unfortunately, we don't have officers here to represent that. But there was a meeting discussing that, that, and that they need help, that they gotta get those additional officers.
We need help throughout the whole city, you know, when we, when we sold adding police officers, we sold to put five, have five per shift and create a swing shift from three in the evening to three in the morning. Two people extra, that's seven officers per shift from three o'clock in the evening to three o'clock in the morning. That's how we sold it. We increased, you know, our payroll and budget and everything in the police department by almost three hundred thousand dollars to accommodate these extra officers. And, and again, is it gonna be twenty-four seven from three to three downtown? No. We're gonna keep officers in the streets, they're gonna do patrolling. As you can see in this and that, there was twenty-one hundred area checks in this area. There was two hundred and fifty parking citations, nine hundred traffic stops to go along with all this information. And this is what we, you know, need is a presence throughout the city. You know, if, if you look at some of the crime areas that we have, it's not there. You know, we did, we did this study months ago, and, and again, I knew nothing about it. I got back in town last Tuesday, knew nothing about this. We had all this information available. We could, we could have handed it out. But then we did a study from the first six months of the year. There were sixty, sixty, um, calls. In that sixty calls, there was more calls on Sunday than any day of the week. There was more, twenty out of the sixty, there was twenty-six calls from five PM to ten PM out of sixty calls. Ten to twelve was fourteen, twelve o'clock at midnight to six in the morning, there was eight calls. And then six in the morning till five, till noon was five calls. So, you know, we had this information, you know, we could have had out there and given it all if we'd have known something about it. But again, the administration knew nothing about this and, and wish we would have, cause we could have had it out there ahead of time and all, and we wouldn't be sitting here maybe right now. But yes, we, we're adding police officers, but it's not just strictly for downtown. They will have a presence downtown, yes. But from three to three, seven officers, I know we have some in law enforcement in here, is extreme large amount of officers for a city our size. And again, you know, we just approved the budget and all, that's in there and everything. So, so yes, they'll have a presence down there. Will it be twenty-four, well, twelve hours a night just strictly downtown? No. There gonna be other areas. They, you know, they creating a little task force, crime task force to go, you know, also look at. They've been working very well with that, you know, so it, it is more patrol. Yes, we do expect more officers downtown through that area and all, patrolling. And, and I think a couple of weeks ago, I got a bunch of phone calls. We had a couple of them down there roaming the streets, yeah. Uh, probably had seven, eight phone calls from business owners and all, thanking and welcoming, you know, down there and everything. So that's what we want. We want a presence down there. Are the new police officers strictly for that area? No, they're not. But they will spend time down there and make a presence, no.
Yeah, that's the clarification I was looking for, cause I think it was said last meeting that there's gonna be a downtown task force. So that's, you clarified that, that comment that was made in the last.
Yeah, a- and again, the intent is to have them down there, but are, are they strict, is that strictly their area? No, it's not. But they will be down in that area. But it's also gonna free up five other officers, you know, in that time for their zones as well. Yeah, you know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Door open, they don't break in, they just
Shane, Shane Bernard? Mister Shane. Sean, I'm sorry. No, you could, okay. Signed up twice, I thought you wanted six minutes. Ray, um, I can't make out the last name.
Evening, fellas. Ray Murphy for Dan Bee. He laughing at that, John? First off, uh, based on the statistics that, uh, Doug put out, obviously, we're not giving him enough liquor. We got that few. I mean, there's a lot more in way, and there's no place to go. Quick history lesson, everything south of the track is old town. Everything north of the track, the west of the track, up, rough around here. Out of here, people say, well, uh, old town, that's not old. Anything north or northwest of the Central Avenue, what used to be railroad avenue, was called the country. There wasn't a paved street around it. Old. Anyway, one of the problems we have in the bay is all y'all should know is, there's not enough homes in this area to provide to the people that's coming here because of that downtown. That's why they come in here. The people that come to that hotel, they're not, I think, fuck, whatever you wanna bet. There's not one of them gonna call the police department complaining about the noise when they stack it up to the elevator and went back. The property value around here, it's skyrocketed. Paid fifty-seven thousand dollars for my house nineteen eighty-five, right now it's worth one point five six million. I mean, little house around the corner for me.
Hope you got good insurance on it.
Can't get in. But anyway, that's why the people come. So, uh, and another thing, council wants to pass, kind of noise on it, they wanna supplement, subsidize our bank notes, our taxes that somebody said went down, that tripled this year, our insurance, I'll sign off on any noise on it if you wanna sign off. That's how we make out. We don't cater, we, you know, somebody said there's a lot of fighting with kids up there, we don't cater. Uh, weekend, people that got homes scattered all over, but they buy houses in this area because y'all trying to sneak in some kind of noise on it. Oh, somebody said it was ten o'clock. I'll see, wait, ten o'clock? Residential. Never did. They've had recent force, I think, when we tried several times. Shot down by a judge because ten o'clock was meant for residential. What is the, the, uh, curfew for kids this day? It's eleven, twelve? What is?
Eleven, I believe.
Are they enforcing it?
Weekend, twelve maybe.
Apparently not, because they walk down my Exactly, they run in the muck, cause I live right around the corner. And, uh, well, one o'clock in the morning, I see gangs of kids walking down my street. So, but I mean, that's a police problem, and they, I am a police officer. Almost fifty years, you can't be in every place. Most, most time we, what we do is, uh, react, we do, you know. I, I don't get, uh, we've been here before with noise on and stuff.
Nothing was trying to be sliding any door.
Well, that's where it appeared last.
No, I explained it the other meeting. I said it, it just, it was just put on the agenda, and, uh, it's just a discussion, right? There's no vote, there's no ordinance, there's nothing that's on paper in front of anybody. It's a discussion, and that's why we're here. So don't say that we try to sneak anything. So that's just, that's just wrong information.
Got something to say, let's figure out. So, uh, anyway, that's pretty much.
Thanks, sir.
Get the police up there. I know them all. They do the best job they can. I think, oh, my time's up, but when they're asking for help, I don't think they ask for help.
We gave them manpower.
Or so they're not, waiting runs down, they just start their process.
Thanks, sir. Okay, Chris Lott.
How y'all doing?
Good, sir.
Chris Lott on Buies Bar, it pretty much everybody knows. We're talking about the problems, the different things we've gone through the, what Doug went through with the call. People say Buies has a fighting problem. I want you to go through that list and show me how many calls have actually been at Buies Bar. You're not gonna find any because we have a security, we have four security officers, a doorman, and a security manager there at night. Um, the noise complaints, people talk about noise, um, Paul Taylor does our music and is our DJ. I talked to the mayor on numerous occasions about it. We're not getting the noise complaints anymore downtown at night, are we? I mean, you talked to Father Mike.
I don't. I talked to Father Mike two weeks ago at Stan's Law's breakfast. You know, he said he hadn't had a problem down there since a couple of months ago, and we had conversations, and whatever we was doing, it continued to do. Had one, one phone call from a lady down on Port Street, I guess a few weeks back, maybe three weeks ago or something.
I mean, we're doing everything that we've been asked, everything the city's talked to us about, everything the council's talked to us about, we've done, we enforce. The ones of y'all that know, I've invited everybody to come up and see what goes on at night. I know some of them been there. I've never seen a couple of them in my life. So, I mean, but the rest of them have been up there and saw what we're doing and have talked about. I feel like this is something that could have been discussed instead of trying to ambush everybody with it. But that's the way it happened, and you could see the community feels like it was an ambush. I mean, that's all we can say, I mean. Therefore, I think you also see the community supports keeping things where we are. Also, I mean, again, there's a lot of steps to do this, doing research. I'm retired, I work for the Attorney General and the Audit Department. It is under D O R, so you'd have to do a resolution to D O R, then they would have to take it before the legislature to get this changed. So us sitting here talking about it really is a waste of time, because we have to go through other steps first before we can even think about them. I mean, we're doing everything, we're making money, I'm, I'm sort of like Ray was. I mean, we all spent a lot of money opening businesses downtown, and we don't want the rules changed halfway through it, like we're trying to do. So, I mean, that's the way I feel about it. Everybody's doing what they're supposed to. We're trying. You show us where they're having calls there, there's problems there, that's fine. Under my insurance, and John call, John Rosetti's our insurance, can call him, we've talked to him about. If the security company walks off our property, they are not covered under our insurance. Once they step foot off the property, and that's with any of the calls, once they step foot off, they're not covered under our insurance. We have no way to enforce anything that happens in the street or the parking lot across the street. We just can't go across, we can't deal with. We can deal with it in our establishment, but we can't deal with it across the street.
To, to that point, the, the lady from Caracas, that same question, do, do you see an issue where you have people in the parking lot across the street that are not visiting your establishment or one of the establishments, but they're just sitting out there causing issues?
Not terribly, but we do see some.
See you getting blamed for, but, but that people
Yeah, we did, you always can have the people, the people that come downtown, they don't wanna spend money. So they do, they sit in their truck, they sit on the beach, and then you also have the eighteen, twenty-one year olds that don't get in.
Can't get in.
So they're sitting across the street, and they are drinking their own alcohol. So that is something that's been seen, and again, there's nothing we can do to enforce that.
An increased presence with, with our new swing shift and, and the, what we approved in our new budget could help with that.
Pre-COVID, they had officers downtown pretty much every Friday and Saturday night. And it was basically the same officers every The people got to know them that are hanging out downtown. The bar owners, the employees got to know them, and there was a great rapport with them. It was a lot easier to handle a problem or something was going on when you call and say Ben or Ian, walk over here. We had phone numbers, so it made a big difference whenever you had the same people and you had that rapport. And that's something that just has not came back since COVID.
And with that, you know, we, uh, like everybody else, we've been very shorthanded. And last year was able to get a big raise for our offices and everything, and been able to fill some spots and all. So, you know, when, when Chief Ponche was here, we tried to keep two people down there. But it got to where they were working seven days a week and never off because being shorthanded, filling in shifts and this and that, and trying to create a, a little, you know, presence down there with two officers. Cause I think if I remember right, they used to go down about ten o'clock at night, eight o'clock sometime. Eight to about two, two thirty, and they just, you know, roamed around down there and made a presence on, and that's what we wanna get back to.
Well, it also goes to, same thing Barbara said. I mean, we could be staying open till daylight. We chose to close at two o'clock in the morning because we felt like we were making money then, but we were also trying to be a good neighbor to people and getting out of there at eight even now. But I mean, there was, it'd be very easy to have stayed all night, but we chose not to do that.
Uh, Mister Lott, a quick question. I know you mentioned Paul Taylor's a DJ, and I know you've got speakers on the outside. Is there a time
Is there a time when that music transitions to the inside of the establishment?
Two o'clock. Um, but we do have, we bought our own desk recorder, we bought our own, um, equipment, and we check ourselves throughout the night. You come in and, again, some of them, the mayor's been there before, and Josh has been there. I can stand at the bottom of my ramp at night and talk to you like we're having a conversation right here and hearing stuff. But we point our speakers towards the building and direct the way the sound is going to keep it in that enclosure. Look, I have them, I have all my D J and my manager, whenever the jeeps are out there or the bus going by with the music, I actually have them video it and send it to me. That way, if there is a complaint, I can forward it on to the mayor, whoever, and say, no.
My last, my last complaint on that was when, in that conversation, we see the video of the bus park down the street across the tracks blaring the music. And, uh, and I passed that on, you know, to Father Mike the other day also, you know? And we do have a problem, there's, I don't know how, how, how they can put in that vehicle and play it that loud, but it happens. Because they come by my house and my windows rattling and everything like everybody else's and all, you know, so. So that's one of the things we really need to crack down on, and, and they're looking, you know, the officers are trying to find that and, and solve that problem as well, you know, so.
Any more questions from Mr. Lott? Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Ritt? You good? Okay. Sarah Hus? Okay. Chris? Docket?
Good evening. I'll keep this real brief, uh, with regards to having all of the complaints, or lack of complaints, has anybody thought about the second and third order of facts of implementing shutting down these bars at these times? These bars that have proven late contain any problems as much as they can, having security on site. What happens when that place is no longer available? It still, it will spill out into the community when people do not have that outlet. As Mr. Lott was just saying, right across the street, you have people who are in the eighteen, twenty-one-year-old crowd who cannot get into the bars, what are they doing? They're hanging out in the parking lots, in the residential areas, and drink, and causing fights, causing problems, whatever. The twenty-one and older crowd will start doing that if they don't have an outlet to go to that has the security in place with the I D. check at the front door, with the cutoff time, a last call. Second, third order effects, if something like this were to pass, will start to hit the community, is that all?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Sarah? Great. Frank is? Bryce? Chance? Okay. Hallie? Fulan? Haley? Jaden? Rhonda Smith?
Come on, someone might talk, I'm gonna take my wife to supper.
We might, might get here now.
I'm gonna pick up some money so I can take my wife to supper.
Might have, we might stay on time now for the over just here. Michael DeGrose? Good, okay. Regina? We should've known that.
Yeah, you should've. Uh, Regina Corso, I live in Waverly, I am an employee at Caracas. The effects that these, okay, these hours that I've heard of, not just the late night, but these proposed hours for things to start liquor sales, what times are those?
I think that was just.
Never any.
It's never. It's nothing ever proposed.
Because the gossip on social media and such.
Someone was sending an ordinance around, not Bay St. Louis's ordinance, with times, and then from eleven to nine on Sundays, it was being sent around, and, and I think that was Oxford's ordinance, and, and that was being passed around. And that's when, you know, that's what I received first when I was out of town and not knowing and all. And, and then, but that was passing around, got sent from bar to bar to bar and all, you know? And I don't know if they know who's sending or whatever, but that was being sent around. So that's probably where particular hours, you know, was very specific came into play.
Well, that's what I was curious of, because that doesn't harm, that harms everyone downtown. If there's hours being eleven A M. of start. No, me and my girlfriends, we would not be happy if we couldn't do our brunch. Just saying. But the thing is, is that these bars have been around for, since Katrina, and the city has permitted them. The city has allowed them to be there and has allowed them to be open. It brings people here. And my opinion is that if something like this passes, you will be ruining our city. We're not ruined now, y'all will be ruined. And that's how I feel, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cliff Ravelli?
Good evening, gentlemen. I haven't seen this big a crowd since we had bail. We're gonna have kids getting run over because Key Dave was putting in a drive. And what y'all have heard, because I had my cleaning gals tell me, oh, they're gonna quit selling alcohol in Bay St. Louis, and I said, no. How many of you have actually come besides Mr. Orman? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm supposed to talk to you guys. Come to this council meeting to find out what we were gonna talk about? What Councilman Knoblock has done is opened a discussion about something that we wanna discuss before we have a problem. I think we're in heated agreement. We are where we wanna be or close to there with the city of Bay St. Louis. Tourism is our paycheck. Tourism is what we live on. These guys, I come up and bellyache to them about how much they charge me for property tax enough, so I want the casino bringing people in. I want V R. B. O.'s giving people place to stay, which we're in disagreement about, but, uh, we want people coming to Bay St. Louis. But what we don't want, to these gentlemen, Mr. Orman and this gentleman was in the service, grew up in New Orleans, you remember nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two, Fat City? And what happened in by seventy-eight? We don't wanna be Fat City in nineteen seventy-eight because it was rough. Bourbon Street got rough in the late sixties. It's rough now, that's right, that's why they come in here. We don't want it to be rough. So we're having a discussion, there's been some severe misinformation put out about all the things they're gonna do, they're quit selling liquor, they're gonna restrict the hour, none of that has ever been discussed. I can tell you, I've come to, John, you come to these meetings, they said we wanna have a discussion, so. Gary Knoblock, thank you for opening the discussion, even though you're getting heat over it. I think the citizens of Bay St. Louis are in heated agreement that we want the bars because they do bring in people. This is a fun, safe place to come, we wanna keep it a fun, safe place. I learned this evening that Caracas, that, uh, you guys are taking care of business, you making sure we don't have problems in the parking lots or in your establishments. Uh, where the other folk, where's the guy from Bowie? You taking care of your business. I as a citizen don't know that, because quite honestly, I avoid those areas during the weekend. But as a citizen, I don't need to go down, I go down there during the week. But, uh, I gotta read my, rest of my notes here, about one minute. Okay, Councilman Knoblock opened this discussion, something got published out there, it got everybody's panties in a wad. In layman's terms, and people are in here thinking they gonna get their, their throats cut by city council. Gentlemen, these gentlemen are not that stupid. They know what brings money to this town, and we wanna keep it a fun, safe place, and that's what this discussion is about. We're not shutting down bars, but we don't wanna be Fat City in nineteen seventy-eight. We don't wanna be the depot eight years ago. How many of you guys remember at the depot eight years ago, the city got sued over for the rough stuff that went on down there? We don't want that, so I applaud the bars, they're taking care of business. And I hope the rest of the people that do. Do I think you need to be open open too? No, by that time you oughta be going home and doing something else, but anyway. I hope you appreciate what these gentlemen are doing, trying to address issues before we have problems. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, sir.
Doug, thank you for the data.
Thank you.
Doug, thank, Gary, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Thank Cliff. Thank Cliff. Michelle Beauregard?
So my name is Michelle Beauregard, I live at three thirty-four Carroll Avenue in Old Town, I've been there since nineteen eighty-three. When the sidewalks were rolled up and there wasn't anything going on, I went to Our Lady Academy, graduated from there, went to LSU, brought my friends home to Dan B.'s, and have known the Murphys since I was a kid. Um, stood before the city council when it was time for gaming to come. And everybody was, oh my God, the whole thing's gonna change and all this is gonna happen. All it did was bring jobs and benefits, something we didn't have. So when I decided to open a business, when I decided to open a business, I wanted to make sure that I was gonna be in a place where I'd have the best traffic, foot traffic, to allow to make revenue. Now, any of you that's been in the restaurant business, it's not easy. Food costs are ridiculously expensive, and when you run a scratch kitchen from everything from scratch, a lot goes into it. I would have never opened and shared a deck with a bar if it would've been closing at midnight. So, the answer is not what we're, we're trying to discuss here. The answer is more presence. Before Katrina, we had cops all over the place. I partied with some of you, drank with some of you. Our former mayor had a seat at the bar pretty regularly and held court. So, I mean, we've always had this, and that was a bar that was open twenty-four, seven. So I'm, I'm asking you to think about what you're affecting here. I sell burgers from eleven A M. till midnight on the weekends, sometimes two o'clock, I have been at that window myself. I have seen some crazy dancing and stuff that I would've done in my twenties. But I've also seen the bar manager and the bouncers take care of business when there's a problem. What I am tired of is getting finger pointed by everybody and their brother saying that everything that goes wrong in downtown Bay St. Louis is Bowie's. Because it's not. Do we have a problem with kids drinking? Absolutely, on a golf cart. There's a guy that comes every weekend that has a truck about his dog hates Trump and everything else. He and his wife sit on lawn chairs in the flatbed of a truck and drink out of their ice chests and listen to music.
Michelle, I don't think it's he hates Trump, I think it's the other way around.
Oh, yeah, but, uh, something like that, something. Um, but what I'm saying to you is, the data that Doug provided is telling. And I wanna see more police. Living on Carroll Avenue as long as I have, we used to see them patrolling. I work from home every day, I don't see them. So you got a task at hand, but it's not stopping alcohol at midnight. Thank you for your time, thanks for the data.
Thank you, thank you. I think Mr. Beebe left already, huh? Okay, yeah. So I think it's a good discussion, I don't think everybody needs to leave here worried, you know? It, it is a big part of our city is having the downtown area, so we, we thank everybody for their investment also. We know y'all invested all y'all money that y'all worked and saved and everything else, so we appreciate it. Thank y'all for investing in our community, thanks to people. Only thing I will say is you go back, a lot of people say, Mr. Cobb said something earlier, the city has changed. It's not what they remember pre-Katrina. So a lot of people will say it's different today than it was. It's a, it's a new normal, but I think it's really attracting things. We don't have quite as many of the gift shops and everything else along there, but it's doing real good, a lot of the foot traffic. And I know this foot traffic even Wednesdays, Thursdays, every night of the week, you just go down Main Street, you'll see people walking from shop to shop and business to business, so it's, it's great.
Kids are something you've never seen in a long time.
Yes.
Coming in town and all with their parents and all, where it's a family deal. Even though there's not a lot for them to get, we do have the beaches and all, and then, you know, we have surrounding areas that has things. When you walk down there in the daytime and see families, you know, six, eight kids with them and all walking down in groups and all, it's something good to see.
It is, it is, and, and I think the kids, I know at one time, they was coming from other spots, dropping kids off down that area, and hopefully the police presence will take care of those issues. So we approved the budget, y'all sat in on it tonight, you'll see a lot more presence once it goes into effect, and they can get people hired and on the streets, so. Any other councilmen have anything else?
Thank y'all for coming out.
Thank y'all for coming out, thank y'all for investing in the community. Motion to adjourn the workshop? Motion, Mr. Seale?
Motion.
Second half man? Vote motion?
Aye.